Call this meeting to order, please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Morning, this is the Board of County Board of Commissioners meeting Tuesday, March 15th, it's a little past 10. I'm gonna move right into consent agenda, Melanie?
Approval of payroll, March 4th, 2022, approval of claims, February 24th, March 10th, 2022. Approval of minutes for February 16th, 2022. Treasurers monthly report, February 28th, 2022 filed, weights and measures monthly report, January 16th to February 15th, 2022.
Thank you.
Motion to approve, it doesn't look like there's anything else.
Yep.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose same sign, motion carries. Next up, under Commissioners, we have two announcements here, we're gonna be accepting citizen applications for the Plan Commission Board. Must be a Democrat affiliation, this will have a deadline of March 31st, so we're gonna be accepting applications until March 31st. And the appointee will complete the term of Michael Marocna, which ends December 31st, 2022. And then we will also be accepting a citizen's application for the Airport Authority Board, must be a Democrat, affiliation with a deadline also of March 31st. And the appointee will complete the term of Bob Paparod, which ends June 30th, 2024. So those are announcements and we'll be bringing that up and getting the applications that come in and we'll be hopefully addressing that at our next board meeting and filling those positions. We, now we're gonna get into the appointment of our citizens to the subcommittee pertaining to the ARP funds and I guess we're just gonna... We have, so we'll get right into the appointments of the citizens, as you know, we've been advertising and promoting people to come forward and sign up for the, the public outreach and the citizens' appointments to the ARP funds discussion. And we're gonna fill, the Commissioners will fill their one appointment for each committee this morning. So I'm gonna go ahead and go first here and do my committee, which is Infrastructure, and get that out of the way and I'm gonna nominate James Hazard, who is an appointee on there from Portage.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for James Hazard to sit on the Infrastructure and Drainage Board Subcommittee, I'm sorry, for the ARP Fund Discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose same sign, motion carries. Next up, we have the Health Department Committee.
For the health, for the COVID health response for the county, I nominate Patrice Mullen.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for Patrice Mullen for the Health Department Subcommittee by the Commissioners. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose same sign, motion carries. Next up, Nonprofits, Jim?
Robin Lane, Valparaiso.
I'll second that. We have a motion and a second for Robin Lane and that's on the nonprofit, right Jim?
Yes, sir.
Just wanna make sure I got those straight.
Is it Lane or Blaine, I'm sorry?
Lane.
Lane.
L-A-N-E.
Okay, we have a motion and a second for Robin Lane on the Nonprofits Committee, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose same sign, motion carries. And then the last one is Mental Health, Jim?
If, if Robin doesn't protest, I'd like to also put her on that, that committee as well, if, if the Board doesn't have a problem with that.
Well, we did have a lot of applications, you sure?
No, I'm not sure. I'm, I'm, I'm fine, whatever the Board would like to do, I mean, we can, we can just simply select a name from the rest of the applications, but I, considering her background, I just thought she'd be a good fit on that board as well. But it, it, it makes no difference to me. So if we wanna take another name from those listed names that are, that are applied, we can do that as well. Whatever you'd like to do.
Which one did you appoint already?
Robin Lane to the, to the nonprofits, this is for the mental health.
Trying to look through here and see who I saw that...
Well, I think for the, just for the mere fact that we were, a lot of the discussion or the last two months have been trying to get more people from the public involved than having two people on the same thing, I think that sort of defeats what everybody's been waving the flag about, so... Jim, it's your committee, why don't you come up with another name, I mean, we're, we're all putting the names forward for our committees, so...
Yeah, I'll s...
I...
I don't wanna be the one to nominate someone to sit, work on your committee.
Yeah, which not, it's not my committee, it's the Sports Committee, and I'm fine, if you recommend a name, I'm, I'll be fine with it.
Alright, let me look at the list.
We can come back to that.
Yeah, we'll come back to that.
We'll just come back, and did we wanna do this other thing, Jim, right now?
Yes.
This where we were, yes, where you were talking?
Yes.
About?
Yes.
Okay, so Scott, why don't you do the setup here?
So we need to have, the Westchester Public Library needs to have an appointment to their Board of Trustees. They have requested the reappointment of Ms. Rondi, excuse me, Ron, uh...
Rondi.
Rondi Whitman?
Rondi Whitman.
Okay. And that was their recommendation to this Board and this Board, to, that was the Westchester's, the Westchester Public Library Board's recommendation to the, to the Board of Commissioners for appointment to the Westchester Public Library Board of Trustees.
I support that recommendation, motion to approve.
We have a motion and a second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose same sign, motion carries, thank you. Okay, next up, we have a cooperative funding and development agreement between the Porter County Convention and Visitors Bureau and the Porter County Commissioners on behalf of promotion and development of each of the following, Porter County Memorial Opera House, aye. Laura Lai should've told you to come up, I didn't see you back there.
That's okay, and I, I think Attorney Hollbeck was supposed to be here, but I'm not sure.
Well, you're fine.
Okay, thank you, I appreciate it.
Porter County Expo Center and Porter County Museum Foundation, and I think we do this every year, and that's an agreement that I think are, the Convention and Visitors Bureau Board and our attorney put together and that's all been reviewed and... Correct, okay, Laura Lai, you have any comments?
Nope, we've got, like you said, our two attorneys worked with each other.
Motion to approve.
Second, we have a motion and a second for a cooperative funding development agreement between the Porter County Convention and Recreation Visitors Commission and the Porter County Board of Commissioners on behalf of promotion and development of each of the following, Memorial Opera House, Expo Center, and Museum Foundation. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose same sign, motion carries.
Same terms, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thanks, Laura Lai.
You're welcome.
Next up, we have a resolution of the Porter County Board of Commissioners cancelling property taxes assessed against real property owned by a political subdivision pursuant to Indiana Code 6-1.1-36-7. Is that a second reading or didn't we do?
Yeah, so what happens is that when a city, this one is the city of Portage, when they purchase property through the Redevelopment Commission or otherwise, the year in which they purchase it, the property taxes aren't changed until the beginning of the following year. There used to be a different process for these to be appealed and in the last couple of years, the state statute has been modified to allow the Commissioners to do this, so this is property that the city of Portage owns and I believe purchased over the last year, last year with the Redevelopment Commission.
Okay, any questions of Scott?
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second on a resolution for the Board of Commissioners cancelling property taxes assessed against real property owned by a political subdivision pursuant to Indiana Code 6-1.1-36-7. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose same sign, motion carries. Next up, we have a proposed raise from 1550 an hour to $20 an hour for Joe DeBazinski, and he is our admin security that is here at night and other off-hours when the buildings opened and...
Mr. Reliable.
Yep, Joe's a great guy.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All those, we have a motion and a second for a raise, 1550 an hour, to $20 an hour for Joe Dis... DeZubazinski.
Joe D.
Yeah.
Can you spell that, Jeff, without looking at it?
No, I can't. D, no, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose same sign, motion carries. Next, we have a request by Tim Stoner to continue leasing approximately 10 acres of county land for farming on State Road 2 in 2022. Mr. Stoner will give the county $1,400 for the use of the land.
That's $140 an acre? That's a deal.
Yep.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose same sign, motion carries. Next up, GIS, you're on. How are we doing this morning? Good morning, great.
Alright, I guess we'll just start at the top, right? So, so we've got a plan letter with UMR regarding the 2022 medical summary, so plan summary description, that's the document that governs the benefits plan, right? So number one and two are basically the same thing in a sense of the changes are one thing and then the letter is what's actually approving those changes. Basically, it's just a bunch of required language from UMR, nothing major, some of it's regulatory and some of it's just clearing up any confusion that currently stands in the SPD yet.
Makes the plan a little more easier to administer too, with the not a lot of gray areas, it just really firms our whole plan up a lot more, we need that, so I'm glad to see these changes have been made for our employees and for people who are on the insurance. Any other questions of anybody?
Are we doing these like one?
That was my next question.
One at a time?
You just want me to keep going or go one at a time?
What do you wanna do?
Do we need to do them all at a time?
Do we wanna do them separately or do we wanna?
I think we can start with, we can do the presentation on the UMR Administration renewal and the Opt-In RX renewal, because then that leads us into the Berkeley Stop Loss Renewal, I mean, they all kind of fold in together, so why don't we do the presentation and then once we're done with all the vows, I think we can take them all en masse, because it's, it's parts and pieces of one large employee health insurance.
Makes perfect sense, perfect, so UMR Admin Renewal, you guys are actually on your last year of a three-year rate guarantee, so no changes from that perspective, everything is good. From the Berkeley Stop Loss, so as you guys know, we went out to the stop-loss market, they came back the most aggressive, much more aggressive than HCC was, to the tune of about $300,000 in savings on a max cost basis, so obviously that's claims fund dollars, it's a big deal. And then also a no new laser policy going forward, which is gonna be very beneficial.
A new what policy?
No new laser policy. That's very good.
It's been, well, can't remember that we've never had a laser, so that's a major improvement for the health insurance.
It's a big deal.
I mean, at the end of the day, the laser is that within the, our stop-loss insurance, certain people at times or certain individuals can qualify for a laser, which is just a fancy way of saying they're outside of the stop-loss insurance, so we've had times, we've had, in recent memory, I can remember four, five, or six lasers within that, so having none is...
Those are expensive.
Those are very expensive.
Those keep going past our 150, so...
Bingo.
Those are, that's a major improvement to the health plan.
So are we, we have more things before we?
Yeah, keep going.
Alright, so and then lastly, we've got the Berkeley Captive, so this is a pooling strategy that we've been analyzing for you guys over the last couple of years. Basically, you guys are now going to be pooled together with some other local municipalities as well as...
Finally.
Right?
It's getting there.
Yeah.
Getting there.
As well as some private organizations across the nation, so the county's also gonna have the ability to possibly get a premium refund on the stop-loss policy, which has never happened before, so it's gonna be a great improvement there as well.
Good news.
Very good.
Alright, well, I motion to approve the listed...
As per the agenda.
As per the agenda, thank you.
Second.
We have a motion and a second on some approvals for GIS on our insurance, per the agenda items, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose same sign, motion carries. Thank you again for all your hard work you're doing on behalf of the county, we've really come a long way and it's, I know it's, we're continuing to start to keep it going down, but you have to manage it to keep it down, so...
Keep chipping away, we appreciate your guys' openness to new, to new things as well, this is a big deal.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, more, more fun stuff here, next up on the agenda is opioids litigation. And I think if you have or have not been following this board over the last couple of years, we've been sort of doing the opioid dance for the lawsuits that have been coming in, we've jumped in, we've jumped out, we're...
Turned ourselves about?
And I think we have some, yeah, I think we have some news here that I'm gonna turn it over to Attorney McClure because this is all legalese stuff, so here you go, Scott.
So the original, we, as you briefly cap, we had the assistance of a law firm who, out of Indianapolis, who was dealing with local, all the local, all the local municipalities in the suit against the opioid distributors and manufacturers. Last year, we had a proposed state statute that we opted out of, the main reasons for that opt-out at that point in time was that we would then be prohibited from participating in any future settlements, when we knew there were some large individuals coming down, or some large defendants that would still, were unsettled at that point in time, so there was a potential for a significant loss to Porter County. Also, under the former statute, the Family and Social Services Administration would ultimately have received our funds or Porter County's funds and that that would have then been distributed and decided upon by the Family and Social Services Administration, which is the state office of how and where that would have been spent. And then last year, we had an opting, an opt-out date to go through under this new statute that was passed and signed by the Governor March 10th of this year, House Enrolled Act 1193, the opioids bill, those issues were taken care of, the, which would allow us and ultimately my recommendation would be for us to opt back in to the settlement and that would be pursuant to Indiana Code 4-6-15-2. First, we would, it takes care of those first three issues in total, the money that would ultimately be Porter County's would come directly to us, there would be some guidelines as to what that could be spent on through the federal court that is handling the multi-district litigation. Unsurprisingly, the uses for that surround the addiction issue, whether it's pre-addiction, addiction, or post-addiction, there are seven or eight pages right now that the federal court has kind of put together on what the money could be spent on. That's the first good issue, that that would have, we would have some local control here over what those funds were being utilized for. Also, we are not, or we would now be able to participate in future settlements from additional distributors and manufacturers. Also, due to the new legislation, there's a significant decrease in the attorney fees, we were on a contingent, a normal contingent fee of a 33 and a third, we didn't have any out of pocket at the time, obviously no one knew where the, where the litigation was going to go or how it was going to proceed. Under this new opt-in, that would be reduced down to 8.7% instead of 33 and a third, so that ultimately puts more dollars here in Porter County to help with this issue. Because there are multiple counties, cities, and towns in the state of Indiana that need to either decide to opt back in or to stay out, that's why there's a little bit of a rush here to get this done, because happening at the same time, the federal litigation is still progressing as if the individual cities and towns are not opting back into the state statute. So given the fact that these things are moving in such a positive manner, I put it on the agenda for everyone's consideration and got an email out to everybody with all the exhibits and the House bill, the exhibit being the draft of the, what could be utilized for the money as it comes in, this is step one. Step two then would be to finalize the payment dates, because this is the, as you can see on the agenda, we're also proposed to approve the participation agreements for settlement, Johnson &amp; Johnson, as you know, as everybody can see, the number a little over $500,000. The other group of individuals there is being referred to as the distributors within the legal documents, those are the names of the individual corporations, that settlement right now is for Porter County being $2,277,832. The attorney fees would come out of that and then there is a payment term, that's not all coming in one year, that's spread out over several years, and those payment dates have yet to be completely determined because the federal court's waiting to see who opts back in and how it all settles out. Once that, once the Commissioners make their decision on whether to opt back in or not, then we would, in the following meetings, have updates as to when and exactly, a little bit more precise parameters on what this money could be spent on. But I think it's a significant, I'm not even sure significant is a strong enough word, change in the state statute, state legislature's definitely met the local municipalities and cities halfway on getting this accomplished and I think, I don't have any reservations on recommending to the Commissioners that we opt back in at this point in time on the opioid settlement through the House Enrolled Act 1193. Be happy to answer any questions.
Yep, Scott, on the, where you have McKesson, Cardinal Health, and Amerisource, there, there still could be other people coming forward too, to be named in this agreement too.
Oh, there's, there's several potential more coming.
Yeah, so there's more coming, just so everybody understands, that isn't the, the beginning of, it's, well, it's the beginning of it, hopefully, you know, but...
And not to get too far in the weeds, part of the reason why some of these haven't moved farther towards settlement is because these companies themselves want to deal with the state of Indiana as a whole, which is, they were also pushing the state to get the legislation to a point where the locals would opt back in, because they obviously wanna deal with a larger piece than many, many smaller pieces. So once this opt-in date, I believe, is July 1st is the deadline to decide whether you're opting back in or not, once all the locals decide and make their decision, I do think they'll be starting to move a little bit quicker, because they're not dealing with so many smaller parts, they'll be dealing with much larger state sizes instead of, you know, the town alone all by itself.
Any other questions of Attorney McClure? So what, what we're gonna be doing here is we're gonna be voting on the opt-back in, we're gonna be voting on the amendment...
To the attorney fee contract.
And then the participation agreement, so we're gonna be doing all three and we should probably do them separate.
I would agree, because the opt-in is a special process that once it's done and signed and there's a special process to get that certified mailed down and filed with the Attorney General's Office for the state of Indiana, so I would like to have an individual motion for one, two, and three.
No public hearing for any of this?
Correct.
Motion to approve the proposed resolution to opt back into the opioid settlement.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second for a proposed resolution to back into the opioid settlement pursuant to IC 4-6-15.2. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose same sign, motion carries. Next up, we have an amendment to attorney fee, fee contract from 31 and a third percent to 8.7%.
Move to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for an amendment to the attorney fee contract from 33 and a third percent to 8.7%. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Pose same sign, motion carries. Next up, we have a participation agreement for settlement for the opioid litigation, this is Johnson &amp; Johnson at $534,149.56. We have McKesson Corp., Cardinal Health Inc., and AmerisourceBergen Corp. for a combined total of $2,277,832.48. Throw it to the floor for action.
Move to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for a participation agreement for settlement for the opioid litigation, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose same sign, motion carries, that through it, so we're good to go on that, thank you. Next up is Matt Gavilak, Senior County Highway Engineering, and Jim Plarick is coming up here too, head of highway, and this is a, yeah, discussion regarding highway funding, good morning, gentlemen.
Yes, good morning, good to see you all. We've prepared a little presentation for you, talk about our road conditions and our current strategy and some proposed strategies for funding. So on the next slide, you can see Porter County has about 781 miles of roads, that's a distance from here to southern Georgia, so just to put it in perspective, we have about 60% of our roads are asphalt, 35% are chip and seal, and then a few other miscellaneous types. On the next slide, you can see each year I go through every road segment, which there's about 3,200, and I rate the conditions of our roads, I do it at the same time each year, same person, and I've been getting three years' worth of data, so we're collecting information on the condition of our roads. And we use a system that the state requires, which is called Pazer, it's an ordered state rating system that allows us to keep track of the condition of our roads. And so we're on, we're at a 5.1 average, which is kind of the low fare range, and for us, one of the big, I guess, needs that we have is that in the next five years, we have about 70% of our roads need heavy rehab or reconstruction. So that's a, that's a huge challenge we have ahead of us, and so it's important that we're doing the right strategies now. And so in our software, and there's a picture of it right there, what I can do is on every little segment, I model out the deterioration of that segment and I can project that out over time, we have about 20 different treatments and it's really accurate to the square yard. And so with that, we looked at, on the next slide here, our existing strategy, what are we doing now? And is our current strategy sufficient or are we losing ground? And so our current strategy, the highway department does about $1.5 million of in-house chip and seal, and then they hire out crack and seal, crack seal, I should say. And then on top of that, we do about $2 million of asphalt projects a year, which is a million dollars from Commissioners and then a million dollars matching from the state community crossing matching grant. And what you can see here are some pictures of modeling this current strategy out 20 years, you can see on the top picture that we're slightly losing ground on our Pazer value, and then this, the bottom picture is our remaining service life, so years before we need to reconstruct a road, we really go down with this current strategy. So to answer the question simply, our current strategy does not keep up with our deterioration.
And before you move from that slide, right now, the 1.5 million of crack, of chip and seal and crack seal, that's, we believe is this year, we're projecting that to come out of the highway budget, correct?
Correct, yes.
The million dollar match for the CCMG grant, that is not budgeted, we've been finding that on a year-to-year basis.
Yes, you have, yep.
So our existing funding strategy is, is not... So our existing funding strategy is, is not budgeted at budget time with the million dollars for the CCMG.
Correct, yep, yep, yep. And so then this next slide will show you different strategies where I took dozens and just kind of tested, let the computer do its thing, but I landed on two strategies. If you go one more slide over, should be, okay, there's one between that, I don't know if you can pull that up. Anyways, I can just describe it. So there's a, I took a look at two different strategies. One of them is adding two million dollars of extra asphalt paving on top of the existing strategy. And then the other, and that's strategy two, strategy three is adding four million dollars of extra asphalt. With that, we gain ground with the two million dollars, we greatly gain ground with four million dollars. With the strategy where you have two million dollars of asphalt, we reduce our poor roads down from forty percent where we're at right now to twenty-five percent. If we add the four million dollars of asphalt, we gain a lot of good roads. And in twenty years from now, we'll have forty percent of our roads are in good condition. So it really, you know, you could pick any variant of that, but the more money we add to it, we're going to be able to improve our road conditions. Adding another two million dollars a year, which is a three million dollar net outlay for, you know, our funding needs, as you mentioned, Scott, that causes us to just slightly gain ground. So that roughly is our funding need and just wanted to ask if you had any questions.
Does your projections take in growth? Because growth means more traffic.
It doesn't take in growth. It's really hard to project out. I do take into account inflation, so we know this year's been rough, but we've had many years with no inflation, so it's about three percent inflation and we held funding at the same because that's kind of been a past practice that funding has kind of leveled off for, for years, so.
I would also like to point out, over the last five years, obviously I'm center district commissioner, right? So I think in our data somewhere, it shows that the most worn-out roads and the most used roads are sixty, sixty-five percent of them are in center district, right? Because of the traffic.
Yeah.
And I think the last five years, we've had back-to-back-to-back detours on thirty, we've had back-to-back detours on two, we've had back-to-back detours on forty-nine, we've had back-to-back detours, well, back, we only had one year detour on Smoke Road. And what that made is this center-south part of the county, I think we're all, I see people shaking their head, I think we all remember that, remember? Because they were also dip dodging and weaving through all of our subdivisions too, quite fast. And we've been dealing with traffic issues, we've been dealing with complaints, we've been dealing with, but in, 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 just bringing it back to what Jim said, there's, all of, all the people coming here from Illinois to get their hair cut, to get their beer, to go golfing, to do everything that happened over those two years, our roads took a tremendous amount of punishment. And, and I think people that live around the center area of Alpo have probably noticed that just by driving to work every day, and it's concerning to us. We need to get back on top of this, but these detours that the states give, they give us a little bit of money to sort of handle the detour, but in the long run, it's really a very, very small pettance for what we give for that compared to.
It's not rebuild your road money.
It's not rebuild your road kind of money. It's like here, take a little bit of this and call it a day. So I, I just felt like I needed to say that because I've spent the last four years dealing with this here in center district. And, and I know the commissioners here, I think two years ago, we've always sort of given our money out equally by each district, and I think it was two years ago, Jim and Laura even allowed center district to get a little bit more of the money to help us get caught up. And those were decisions that we had internally here to make that, to make it work, but I, I just wanted to sort of put my experience on it and just sort of let everybody know that it's real. And I get out and I drive the roads a lot because I'm into the roads, that's roads and drainage, that's my deal, but it, it, it's what, it impacts everybody. And that's, I see where you're coming from.
Yeah, the, the increase in, in retail, you know, in and around center Valpo, certain parts of Portage Township on Route Six, I mean, you can just, you go, you go and look at those county roads that are adjacent to all that and they are in the worst shape.
Yep, absolutely. Yeah, and another reason why center is in worse shape than District One and Three is because you guys have quite a bit of chip and seal that the highway guys have been able to keep in a, a good condition, but you don't have any and you have like ninety miles of subdivisions that were built in the nineties, eighties, sometimes earlier, and that pavement has, has, you know, unfortunately not been able to be a priority, you know, so it's just aged for decades.
Last year, we did three million out of the foundation earnings and we did a subdivision paving program because we had over three hundred subdivisions and we went with our worst twenty. And our worst twenty hadn't seen anything for forty, fifty years.
Yep.
But we got into some of these older subdivisions and got them spiffed up with that foundation money and so we're, we're constantly looking for ways to get more money, to do, get more black on the ground and, and, but we're behind, we're behind.
And you guys are going in front of the council as well, right, with this?
Correct, it was submitted for the, for the additional for the, it won't be on until their April meeting, just because of the timing, but yeah.
But you're giving them this presentation too, so they're informed.
I can.
I think we need to start budgeting.
I think we should.
Sure.
I would ask that you go ahead and get on their agenda.
Okay, we'll do that, for sure.
Is it hard enough for us to kind of scramble to find the money to match now if we are bumping that up a couple million dollars or more?
Yep.
And just so everybody.
They need to start budgeting some.
Sorry, Lori, just so everybody knows, art funds and any funds that we've gotten from the federal government that everybody's been cooing over the last two years, none of it goes towards paving. Zero, nada, none. So just want to clar, clarify that because I don't think a lot of people really know that, but that does, it does not, it does not, it's, it's not allowed. So I'm just letting everybody know, I'm not digging or anything, I'm just letting you know, people, some people come to me, well, you got all that money, and it's like, well, it's a different bucket. So just want to get that out there too.
Yeah, I mean, your message is we, we, we're going to have to do something a little differently here, tackle it a little differently.
Absolutely, yep.
And if you've lived in Porter County ten years or more, you've seen the difference in traffic, the amount of traffic that, that we have. I mean, just, just right there by the bypass, we're targeting all that stat. I mean, ten years ago, that was not, none of that was there.
Seven hundred north up in your district has been, you know, bypass for US six, so, yeah.
Well, thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Sobering news, but we sort of felt it, but let's, let's roll our sleeves up and let's get to work on it, see what we can come up with.
I've tried with the state within that to get them to take our weather into account, but they're not having it.
We've tried. It is a different breed, Saul.
Yeah, they don't, they don't realize what.
It's a different world up here in North Tennessee.
That would make too much sense.
Yeah. Okay, back to business here. Thank you, gentlemen. Next up, Sheriff Reynolds, he had an ordinance in here for a new fund to receive monies from various agencies pertaining to the work of special units. This was done on first reading at the last minute, this is second reading, I'll throw it to the floor for action.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We got a motion, a second on an ordinance for a new fund to receive monies for various agencies pertaining to the work of special units. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose same sign, motion carries. Next up, same thing with the juvenile detention center, Allison, there she is. I saw you come in, so I was wondering if you were.
I snuck in.
Yeah. This too is second reading, and this was an ordinance renaming the Porter County Truancy Court Fund, which is a non-reverting fund, forty-nine, twenty-seven, to the Porter Circuit Court Problem Solving Court Fund for the receipt of fees associated with any problem-solving court administered by the Porter County Circuit Court. Second reading, I'll throw it to the floor.
Motion to approve. I bet that gets an acronym pretty quick.
I'll work on that one.
What are the initials that we can help you out with?
Yeah, I'll work on it.
The fund.
The fund.
The fund. Are you already motioned?
Yeah, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose same sign, motion carries. Thank you, Allison.
Thanks, guys, I appreciate it.
Yep, no worries. Next up, we have the health department and they have three funds that they're going to establish. We have to do all these separately?
Yes.
Oh, boy.
Then they all get public hearings.
Okay, so hang on, everyone, this is going to get a little tiring. Good morning, ladies.
Good morning.
Letty.
Yes.
Just want to thank you for your service at the county. I don't know if we'll get another opportunity to say that, but Letty's retiring and moving on to a better life or laughed after the health department, right? But thank you for your service, Letty.
Thank you so much.
So what we have here is an ordinance to establish a fund eighty-nine-eleven. This is for the receipt of funds for COVID-related grants pertaining to immunization and vaccines for children in the amount of three hundred and forty-five thousand, eight hundred and ninety-four dollars and seventy-five cents. This is first reading, so what we're going to do is we're going to close this, we're going to suspend the commissioners' meeting, we're going to open up a public hearing, and we're going to give everybody three opportunities to come forward to speak in favor of setting this fund up and three to come forward to speak against setting this fund up. So the first one, anybody wishing to come forward to speak against this fund, create the creation of this fund. Second call, anybody wishing to come forward to speak against the creation of this fund? Third and final time, anybody wishing to come forward to speak against establishment of this fund? First call, anybody wish to come forward to speak in favor of this fund? Second call, anybody wish to come forward to speak in favor of this fund? Third and final call, anybody wishing to come forward to speak in favor of this fund? And with that, the public hearing is now closed. We will now open it up to the board for us to take action if so.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second on first reading. This is an ordinance to establish a fund eighty-nine-eleven for the receipt of funds for COVID related to grants pertaining to immunization and vaccines for children in the amount of three hundred and forty-five, eight ninety-four, seventy-five. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose same sign, motion carries. Next up, we have another establishment of fund for the health department. This is receipt of funds related to grants and pertaining to epidemiology and laboratory capacity for infectious disease in the amount of a hundred thousand. So again, we're going to, we're going to pause the commissioners' meeting and open up a public hearing. And again, we're going to give three opportunities for anybody to come forward to speak in favor and three opportunities to come forward to speak against. First call, anybody wish to come forward to speak against establishing this fund? Second call, anybody wishing to come forward to speak against the establishment of this?
Is it a fund for children of a certain age or is it for all ages as far as the funding literature that I speak for, for these, these shots?
It's all ages.
It's all ages?
All ages.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, yeah. I mean, I don't know, do I need to go into the?
Well, if you want to, this is the public hearing portion, yes, this is where you come and say your.
Just wanted to make sure I understood as far as the maximum.
Yeah, you're good.
Okay, my name is Dawn, I live in Valparaiso, Miller. I'm against any of this funding for shots for any children related to the COVID, especially, let's see, the five to eleven-year-olds, Moderna came out, they have a study that's already shown that it's ineffective for these children of this age, so I'm definitely against that. Thank you.
Thank you. Third call, anybody wishing to come forward to speak against this fund? Nope, we got someone coming here.
My name is Penny Kuzmic, two five eight Haas Street, Valparaiso, Indiana. I'm a little concerned about the fact, I know this is the first reading, but these things are brought up so quickly, it's almost like they're here and gone before you get a chance to even think about their, about what they're about. So I would like to request actually that, that there would be a little more explanation on some of these things before everybody just jumps in and in about less than sixty seconds, the opportunity to speak is, is here and gone before people have a chance to engage their brains on what they're actually getting a chance to speak on. So as far as I agree with Dawn about the vaccination of the children, I mean, I know the federal government's not, not really looking at any of this science, but anybody that has an opportunity to really look at what's going on with vaccinating children, just even the, the new stuff that's coming out from Pfizer that's being released and it's being read, anybody that would want to go and vaccinate children and actually enable these funds to be used, there's something wrong with that, so, thank you very much.
Anybody wishing to come forward to speak in favor of this fund? Second call, anybody wishing to come forward to speak in favor of this fund? Third and final call, anybody wishing to come forward to speak in favor of this fund? And with that, the public hear, hearing portion is now closed and I'll throw it to the floor for the commissioners.
And this is fund eighty-nine-twelve, correct, Mr. Chairman?
Correct.
Yes.
Motion to approve.
Can I explain something? Okay, so the first fund, eighty-nine-eleven was for the vaccine, vaccine grant, and the second one, the one we just read, this is for the testing.
Mm-hmm.
Just want to make sure.
Yep.
Okay, well, I second for the testing and since we have been discussing the other one, I, I think it's up to the parents whether or not they want to get their children vaccinated for this, so I definitely would support it.
This has nothing to do with any kind of mandatory?
Right.
This is totally up to the parent.
This is creating a fund, that's all this is. It just creates a fund that if the money comes in, you have a place to put it. That's what this does.
And a parent wants to vaccine their child, the money's there to them.
That's their choice.
Yeah.
So, sir.
Okay, we have a motion and a second on first reading. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose same sign, motion carries. Next up, we have again, another public, we're going to open up a public hearing here again, and we're going to pause the commissioners and we're going to open it up again, three opportunities, come forward to speak against, and three opportunities, come up, speak in favor. This, yeah, why don't you explain what this fund is for then?
Okay, so this fund is, the state has offered funding to the health department to either hire nursing from outside or to use our own nurses to work as liaisons and work with all the schools, which is sixty-nine schools, work with their nurses and their superintendents in education, in doing support and, and assisting with vaccinations, whether it's flu vaccinations or COVID vaccinations, but also, we also are supposed to be providing health clinics such as vision, hearing and.
Dental.
And dental.
Screenings.
So it's our responsibility, the nurses' responsibility to go out there every quarter to all the schools, assuming the schools agree that they want us to go out there and help them out and to assist them and support them and provide these services.
And issues of general health.
General health.
And this, and this would be reimbursed to your health department from the state?
Yes, from the state.
Okay, so this is a reimbursement.
Yes.
So we're creating a fund again to put money in from the state to go?
Yes.
Okay. So first, first call, anybody wishing to come forward to speak against creating this fund? Second call, anybody wishing to come forward to speak against this fund? And we have a table.
Hello, Dawn.
Miller, here in Valpo. So I guess my question is, are you saying that this is something that you would be taking to schools to educate them on getting this shot?
No, no, no.
To encourage them to get the shot? I just want to understand that part.
What it is, is that the health, the state health department is asking all the health departments in all the counties in the state to provide assistance and to help out all the schools in education. We are, the health departments are the experts in what is needed. And so we were allowed to either hire out or use our nurses. Our nurses have a very good relationship with all the nurses in the school systems and the superintendents, which is why we decided to use our staff instead. It's to provide whatever assistance the schools need, the nurses need, and it's not to promote, encourage vaccines, it's to help them with whatever they need, to make sure the kids are healthy. This is always, always our priority to make sure that children are always safe and healthy.
And each school has their own school nurse, correct?
Yes, they do.
And do they, are they not equipped with that information already to be able to educate the children when they come?
They are, but that's why we say assist and support, because it's up to the schools and the school superintendents to make that decision whether they want us to help. and the school superintendents to make that decision whether they want us to help them. Do you guys give them pamphlets and things of that nature? We do that, we're there on call for them, if they have questions, they need assistance, they need literature, whatever they need, we are there for them. Thank you.
Third call, anybody wishing to come forward to speak against creating this fund? First call, anybody wish to come forward to speak in favor of creating this fund? Second call, anybody wish to come forward to speak in favor of creating this fund? Third and final call, anybody wish to come forward to speak in favor of this fund? And with that, the public hearing is now closed, and we'll move towards taking action on the ordinance.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second on an ordinance to establish fund eighty-nine thirteen for receipt of funds for COVID-related grants pertaining to workforce development, COAG, in the amount of four hundred forty thousand dollars, first reading. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign, motion carries. Thank you, ladies.
Thank you.
The last one.
Bye, Letty. Okay, next up, we have Lee, uh, from IT.
Lee from IT, that rhymes.
Good morning.
Good morning.
So we have before you a maintenance contract for the video cameras for the Sheriff's Department for this year, the tune of nine, twenty-nine thousand nine hundred and eighty-eight dollars.
That's for the whole year?
That is for the whole year, and I might point out, I've got a contract that you signed from two thousand nineteen, and the fee has not increased, it's the same.
So it's flat? Any questions of, uh, Lee?
Motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion and a second for video tech, this is a preventative maintenance agreement for the Porter County Jail in the amount of twenty-nine thousand nine hundred and eighty-eight dollars. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign, motion carries. Thanks, Lee.
Thanks, Lee.
Uh, next up is Expo Center, Lori Daley is not here to present, she has the Valpo Chamber out there today for lunch, three hundred and fifty people, and she wanted to be there, which I don't blame her. Um, so we have Voice Systems, this is a maintenance agreement providing support services for the accounting system in the amount of two thousand three hundred and twenty-five dollars. Uh, that's for May first through April thirtieth to, through twenty-three.
Motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion and a second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign, motion carries. Uh, next up is, uh, this is just a catering contract that we've been, uh, doing the last several meetings, this is for El Salto Mexican Restaurants, this is on our contract form, um, so I'll throw it to the floor for action.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for El Salto Mexican Restaurant Catering Contract for the Expo Center, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign, motion carries. Next up, uh, Facilities IT Group, we have a UPS System Service Renewal to provide main- preventative maintenance inspections in the amount of two thousand six hundred and ninety dollars.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign, motion carries. Next up, we have the Highway Department, Jim Polarek. Looks like we're gonna move some money around here. Morning, Jim.
Good morning.
Again, what do you got?
We have, uh, an additional in front of you, uh, actually, three of them. One of them is, uh, the first one is for funding out of our LIRS account, which has a, a healthy cash balance in it. Um, this one would be to crack seal roads, uh, the vast majority of these roads are the ones that have been paved within the last two to six years, so we're sealing those cracks up to keep the water out and from, uh, causing potholes, hopefully. Um, the contractor has the list of proposed roads, and they're working on, uh, estimate as we speak, so we should have that exact bid number or quote from them in the next couple of weeks.
We probably need to do these separate, right? Because they're funds, or can we do them all together?
We could do all these together.
Okay, go ahead, bring them, Jim.
Um, the next one is, uh, an additional for eight hundred and fifty thousand for our bituminous out of our, uh, MVH account, which also has a healthy cash balance in it right now, um, and this would come out of the restricted side, uh, as far as the state is concerned due to the, it's the bituminous used for our, uh, chip seal program. And the third one is for the, uh, aggregate used in the chip seal program, out of the same fund.
And they have healthy balances because it's been winter.
Correct.
We couldn't do anything that...
Eleven seventy-three has a healthy balance.
Yeah, the, yeah, MVH has over three million roughly, and...
Yeah. I just, it wasn't because we have so much money for roads that we're...
Right, not in eleven seventy-six, which, you know, the restricted, we have plenty, we'll actually be transferring the additional into eleven seventy-three on a dollar-for-dollar basis as we spend the money.
Got it.
But on another note, that, that restrict, or the unrestricted has started to make its way into the black.
Oh, it's, it's doing better.
Yeah, so we're...
Health insurance, still.
Going in the right direction.
Yeah, right, we got the health insurance figured out, yep.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second on three requests for additional appropriations from the Highway Department as noted on the agenda. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign, motion carries, thanks, Jim.
Thank you.
Yep. Next up, Development Stormwater Management, Bob Thompson, Director. Morning, Bob.
Morning.
Uh, first up, we have a request to vacate a right-of-way at Biscayne Drive in Lake Eliza, this was a petition of Kim Marie Correles, um, this is second reading, this has been heard already, uh, and went through the public hearing portion of this at our last meeting, so this is second reading, throw it to the floor for action.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second on a request to vacate a right-of-way at Biscayne Drive in Lake Eliza, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign, motion carries. Uh, next up, what do you got, Bob, DLZ, uh, uh, Construction Inspection Agreement?
Yes, this is for Bridge Sixty-Eight, uh, Smoke Road over, um, Jones Ditch, this is one we have federal funding for, NDOT, matter of fact, just released the notice to proceed to Ellis Construction out of Gary to start this bridge, um, so this is the Construction Inspection Agreement, and, uh, Matt Gevelik and, um, Christie Antonio will also be down there doing inspections on it, so they work out, uh, an agreement with the consultants, so.
Question to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second on, uh, Construction Inspection Agreement with DLZ for work on Bridge Sixty-Eight, this is Smoke Road over Jones Ditch, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign, motion carries. And, uh, what's, next up, what do you got here, Bob?
This is the ADA Transition Plan, this is a requirement that we have to have in place along with Title Six for, uh, discrimination purposes and allowing, um, claims to be filed with the county, since we do receive federal funding from, um, Federal Highway and through NDOT, we have to have these plans in place to continually receive the federal funding that, um, we have from transportation projects. What this does is there's a resolution in place on this, um, that is here before you, essentially, it names our County Facilities Director as the ADA Coordinator on that, um, and it, we did this in-house this year, as far as, um, just figured, twenty-twelve report did the, a lot of the facilities and a lot of the measurements, and we figured that's, you know, good report still, even though we've done a lot of reconstruction. This time, what we focused on was a grievance procedure that is within, on that, um, to allow people that if there is a problem, come file a complaint, and we'll look into it and we'll fix it. So that's what this plan is really heavily on for that, so, I mean, the resolution does talk about that, um, the notice under the, uh, American Disability Act that a lot mentions the commissioners are out there, you know, they realize it, and they're not gonna discriminate, and they're gonna provide accommodations when appropriate.
I think one of the interesting things to me, being up here, has been that you, in order, every time there's something to sign on behalf of NDOT, you have to, you have to have an ADA person approve the, the, the funding, it's, it, I just came out of left field for me, um, from that perspective, I wasn't expecting that, it's odd, but it's a requirement, so. Any comments or questions, Bob?
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second on a resolution of the Board of Commissioners of the County of Porter, adopting the American with Disabilities Act, designating the ADA Coordinator and adopting procedures, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign, motion carries, thanks, Bob.
Can I mention something real quick?
Yes.
Bridge one sixty-eight, that was just recently let, um, Brummett Road over, um, the Little Kymet River, all right, that letting came out at a little over two-point-five million dollars on that, and we had six hundred and seventy thousand dollars of federal funding towards that. NDOT saw that and threw one-point-three million dollars at us for this, so it is now eighty-twenty for this construction on this, so the commissioners are gonna be receiving the, um, agreement for this, accepting this additional funding and everything like that, and matter of fact, it just went out email, I think, um, today, so...
Is it Docu-assigned again?
It's Docu-signed, so I just wanted to make you all aware of that, and also to announce that we...
You say today?
Huh?
We'll get it today?
I, it goes through the step process and the chain and everything like that, so, it, you know, if you see something come through, yes, Docu served.
This is a bridge going over Jones Ditch.
Oh, that's the one that DLZ is doing, the one, I'm just mentioning this is up by Brummett Elementary School.
The big one.
Yeah. That one was just let.
Okay.
Again, so...
Last meeting, I think we let it.
So is that road, will that, will that, when they can, when they, they start moving stuff, will that road be totally closed?
It will be totally closed.
Good to know.
Yes, it will.
I think you've been having dialogue with the schools and everything, correct?
Yes, we have, we've sat down, our consultant has, I've sat down with the Facilities Director of, uh, Dunland Schools, and we've mentioned it to them, so they're well aware of it, we're hoping to, I mean, NDOT's in total control of this contract, so what we're hoping is that in these situations that, um, hopefully the contract will be conscientious and try to get it as close to the end of school as possible, so we don't disrupt them that much, but I...
Any idea how long that would be closed?
That is probably, my guess is going to be nine to ten months, Matt?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, it's gonna be about nine to ten months, so it's gonna, it's going to disrupt school in the fall.
We're moving everything up there, sewer line, there's, there's just all kinds of stuff going on up there.
Yes.
Yeah, if you, if you, if you go, go to that area and look, I mean, it's, there's a lot of stuff, a lot of utility, a lot of stuff right there, it has to be moved around.
Hmm.
But at the end of the day, hey, look, it's gonna be a better road, a better bridge for the school and everybody else, too.
Oh, it's gonna be a much better bridge.
Has to be done.
Yes.
Thanks, Bob.
All right, thank you.
Have a good day. Next up, uh, we have a request to use the Admin Center, uh, that's this building, to display artwork by the students on Friday, April twenty-second, through Saturday, May twenty-first. She is requesting the building be opened on Saturday, April twenty-third, from eleven to one for the kickoff. Joe D., Admin Security, will be on, 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 uh, on staff for the kickoff, will be in the building, uh, there for when that happens. Throw it to the floor for action.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign, motion carries. And last, uh, we have Alicia Brown, uh, this is a request to use county roads, oh, come on forward, I don't want to steal your thunder here.
Oh, no, go right ahead.
So why don't you tell us what you're doing here, I don't like reading this, it's...
You do look such a good...
Yeah.
Uh, my name's Alicia Brown, and I'm with, um, Race the Region, which is affiliated with Extra Mile Fitness, uh, we are requesting permission to use the county roads to do our second annual, uh, What the Hill Half Marathon, uh, there'll be a five K included, but that's gonna be all in the Coffee Creek Watershed, so we won't need you.
That'd be nice.
Yeah.
Pretty, that's...
That's What the Hill?
What the Hill Half Marathon.
Scott and I are practicing for that right now.
You said that last year, I think your registration must've got...
We're still practicing, catching on.
Must've got lost.
Working out, yes. You're catching on, a little stretching out.
It's all...
Still stretching out.
There you go. Yes, don't wanna, don't wanna pull anything. Um, it is Sunday, May eighth, um...
You guys don't have much time.
Yeah.
You better start now.
Let's just show up, put them all in their place, Scott, let's just show up.
Yeah, better call the ambulance.
Make sure we videotape that.
Bring your bike.
Yeah, no videotaping allowed.
Okay, all those in favor?
Well, motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, I got a little ahead of myself, see, you almost... All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.